We're recording.
Just having a good time chit-chatting here. I called home.
Oh, come on, it's.
All right.
Apparently isn't it? I also have to check if it makes more or less.
All right, I'm gonna call the November 20th, 2023 Sandusky Planning Commission meeting to order. If we could have a roll call, please.
Jay Castile. Jim Jackson.
Here.
Pete McGory.
Here.
David Miller. Steve Pajali.
Here.
Connor Whalen. Mike Zuloff.
Here.
Here. So, we've got, what, four out of seven?
We've got a commission, we've got a quorum.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Then we have a quorum, I'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is approval of the minutes from the October 25th, 2023 meeting. Has everybody had a chance to review those and?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Thank you, gentlemen. So, no additions or modifications or corrections. Any discussion on those, the motion? Pay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes approved. Next item on the agenda is adjudication hearing filed by the Toledo Sign Company through Mr. Brian Heil on behalf of GAH, GHH Properties LLC for conditional use permit at 1030 Hayes Avenue to allow wall sign larger than nine square feet in a residential zoning district. Perhaps the department could educate us a little on that application.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I get started, just a gentle reminder, we have to swear everyone in before any presentations presented or anything is on the record, because this is an adjudication hearing.
Oh, okay. Anybody that's here to present a statement or testimony would raise their hand to be sworn in? You're, okay. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth with respect to the application?
I do.
Okay. Is it Heil or Heel?
Heil.
Heil?
Yeah.
Okay, like saying.
No, not like that.
All right. Would, we gonna have staff do a presentation first?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, this site in question is owned RRB Residential Business. The surrounding zoning to the north is RRB Residential Business, to the east is R2F2 Family Residential, to the south is RRB Residential Business, and to the west is PF Public Facilities. The surrounding uses of the site are business, residential, and the hospital. The existing use of this site is in the transitional period. It was a business and is continuing to be a business. The proposed use is a business. It's currently transitioning into an office and clinic for a physical therapy office and clinic. This location received a use variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals for this use on 615 of 2023. The zoning code permits signs up to nine square feet in a residential zoning district, given that this is in fact zoned residential business, which is a residential zoning district. The sign in question tonight exceeds nine square feet and therefore requires a conditional use permit. So, this sign is going to be constructed along Hayes Ave. The area of the signed letter will be 42.5 square feet, and the icon will be an additional 14.7 square feet totaling approximately 57.2 square feet. The zoning code of signage on a front facade, if this were in fact zoned a business or commercial district, would allow 57.57 square feet in comparison, which is very similar to what is proposed here. The application meets or exceeds all the standards for evaluating a conditional use permit in a residential zoning district. There was no objections from any other departments of city staff. And based on these findings, staff supports the approval of the proposed conditional use permit at 1030 Hayes Ave with the following conditions. That's all applicable permits are obtained through the Billing Department, Engineering Department, Division of Planning, and any other applicable agency prior to any construction. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a question now. In an adjudication hearing, is there any notice that goes out to any neighbors?
That is correct. There's a 10-day written letter notice that is mailed to surrounding properties with 300 feet of this parcel.
Has the city had any reply from anybody?
There's been no reply, positive or negative.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions to staff?
I did have a question on the, what's up on the screen there? The first dimension, 180 inches overall, is that just the letters or the entire sign?
So, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Zuloff, I did this measurement as well, because it was a little misleading. That is correct. The 180-inch width is the total, so that's with the icon and the lettering. It was kind of worded weird, worded weird on the application and the drawing here, but that is.
All right, but it strikes me as, just doing a quick calculation here, I mean, I, my little machina scale, that it's maybe shown a little larger than it really is going to be, is what I seem to be getting here.
Based on my measurement, it is to scale.
Or that, or is it small? It was, it says 180 overall, everything, right? From end to end. Is that the correct dimension?
That's correct, yes.
Right. And I'm getting something more like, more like 18 feet, which would be 212 inches. Anyway, so pretty close, though. I'm only, yeah. Someone said, is it really going to be that small or that big or something? I don't even remember how I, but yeah, thank you. It's pretty close. It's actually going to be a little smaller, I think, than what I'm seeing. If I believe the dimensions, then we can probably grill the applicant on that.
Yeah, we can ask the applicant for any confirmation. Based on my personal measurements, I got about 14 feet in width, and this is showing 15 on the dimensions.
Yeah.
So, give or take, it's very similar or very close to the scale, but.
Thank you.
Yeah, I do think we could ask the applicant for confirmation.
I have another question. Is this a lighted or unlighted sign?
So, as proposed currently, it's lit, but however, it's not allowed in a residential zoning district to have any light, either external or external lighting. So, I've talked with the applicant, so they are now aware that during the permitting process, they won't be able to have lights on the sign.
This is an internally lit sign?
As originally proposed, the applicant, like I said, is aware now, and they're going to make adjustments. I can't issue a permit as it's proposed, so tonight we're looking at the size of the sign, not the lighting, only the size of it.
Well, it's sort of an awkward situation, because it's, it's residential, so you've got people to respect. I mean, you've got a residential neighborhood. Across the street, you've got a parking garage, right? And it's sort of, can you tell us something about the historic use of this building? How did it come to, was it constructed or in use for commercial purposes before we had the zoning perhaps? Or how did it come that it's zoned residential even though it's an obvious commercial building?
Sure thing. Mr. Chairman to Mr. Zuloff, I don't know that far back, to be completely honest, because the zoning code was enacted in the late 70s, early 80s. I can confirm that the previous use to the proposed physical therapy office slash clinic was a business use as well. They also had a use variance issued to them. It was for a sign shop. I believe they stamped signs and also sold them at this location. And anything before that is off record. I don't know off the top of my head, and I can look at that and get back to you.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I can answer those questions. When I was a kid in grade school, which was in the 50s, it was a bicycle shop. And for years, it was a bicycle shop, and then he started selling motor scooters. But we're talking 50s, when that bicycle shop was in operation on Hayes Avenue.
Was it an empty lot or parking lot next to it, too?
No, no.
What was that, a house or?
I don't know what was there, but there wasn't, there wasn't that parking lot right there.
So, I'm mildly concerned that you don't seem to have records before, what, 1980 or something?
So, yeah, that's when the zoning code was enacted, so any record-keeping prior to is kind of.
Yeah, okay. But you do have records all the way back, complete, because I know you used to keep files on each address, and you still have access to those then?
That's correct. There are records that are before 1980 that we have in the basement. A majority of the records we do have are after, or during or after 1980.
Thank you.
So, I'm just trying to be clear in my mind. So, we're approving yes or no on the size of the sign, and we approve it in unlit version? Is that no internal lighting?
That's probably a question for law. As far as I know, the only thing that we are voting on tonight is the size. I'm not sure if you can put another condition that would prohibit any lighting. And to be completely honest, that's something I'm going to look at before I issue their sign permit. I can't, like I said, permit any signage if it's lit. So, until that's adjusted, this approval process won't be complete anyways.
I'm missing something here. Are you saying this would go to BZA or something to be a different?
Correct. So, if they do want to go forward with any lighting, they'd have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals again.
Internally lit or externally lit?
Both, that's correct, yeah. Any lighting.
That's kind of the way I understood it. So, I don't see why we couldn't, and again, I don't see why we couldn't approve an unlit sign here. I mean, we, I'm sure we would defer to the law director's opinion on that, but I seem to see a little nod there.
Yes. Yes, as I understand, this application's only relating to the size of the sign.
Oh, okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman, I wonder if we could ask the representative in the audience to come up and just give us his thoughts, and if you do have the intention of having a lit sign when this is, process is completed.
Okay, originally, we submitted it.
Record, could you state your name? Though we know who you are.
Brian Heil, Toledo Sign Company.
We get your address, too, sorry.
2021 Adam Street, Toledo, Ohio.
Thank you.
Originally, the customer was looking for, like his, all his other locations, he likes the lighted channel letters. We submitted the permit not knowing the, don't deal in Sandusky law, no, the process. This was a residential area, so original drawing, we submitted it as a lighted sign, so now they'd just be happy to get a sign, a nonlit sign on the building. So, I guess first things first, I'm going to try to get the, you know, the size of the sign permitted as is. And then, once that's done, I can't say for sure if they would like to go for a variance for a, to internally illuminate this sign. I would think that they just want to get the sign on the wall, because they're making progress on the, trying to get open. So, I can't speak either way to whether they want to light it or not. Or maybe they'd just be happy with getting a sign on the wall that does not light.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the commission?
No, not, not for me.
Okay, anybody care to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr.
I would move that we, well, if I could, one little comment first. My vote, and I hope everybody else's vote, is about the impact of the neighbors. It's residential area, and so we're talking about changing a, some characteristic of a commercial use in a non-conforming use. So, that to me is the most important thing, is protecting the neighbors so that they don't, they're not negatively impacted. Having said that, I move that we approve the application with the conditions recommended by the staff, that we approve the sign size, an unlit sign of oversized per the application, subject to the conditions recommended by the staff.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? I have a question for staff. So, the motion is to approve a unlit sign of this dimension. Would that preclude, or maybe I should ask the law director, would that preclude the zoning board of appeals from making it a lit sign if they approved that?
No, I don't believe it would, because that's a different kind of application in front of a different board.
Okay. I didn't want to do anything here personally that would stop another board from doing their job, so, okay. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, been moved and seconded. I would ask to be secretary to call a roll on that.
Jim Jackson.
Yes.
Mike Zuloff.
Yes.
Steve Pajali.
Yes.
Pete McGory.
Yes. It's been approved.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Best wishes going forward.
Thanks.
All right, that was the only formal thing on the agenda, but it's my understanding the law department has an update regarding the discussion we've had a couple of times about derelict votes, which might include the definition of derelict or abandoned votes. And I want to make sure, Chuponey?
Chuponey, yes.
Chuponey?
Yes.
I can say that three different ways and still be wrong.
Yes.
Sarah, how about we do it that way? Sarah, go ahead.
Yes. So, just for a brief update, I met with Mr. Hastings, Ms. Blair, and Mr. Oaks regarding the abandoned boats. We discussed what our ordinances currently cover and what it would not cover. It is our opinion as of this week that we do not need to create any further legislation. So, in other words, the language is all there. So, now going forward, there's just some policy questions that planning and zoning and other departments will have to answer, such as enforcement, abatement issues, that sort of thing.
Okay. So, it's really to develop a game plan?
Yes.
And use existing ordinances already?
Yes, that's correct.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I wonder if I could ask Ms. Chuponey, did I do it right?
Yes.
So, sorry, I lost my thought. I shouldn't distract myself of comments, like. So, do we have definition for abandoned? To me, that might be the toughest. Is it defined in, sufficiently defined in our ordinances?
Yes, so I believe it is defined. Is there anything you would like to add?
No, there are two separate ordinances that deal with abandoned or nuisance boats. The more powerful legislation is in the nuisance part of our code.
Okay.
What we don't have is any means of enforcing that right now, or we have no habit of enforcing that part of the nuisance code. And we also have a police part of the code, where the police chief, if an abandoned boat appears at one of, on city property or on someone's property who doesn't own the boat and they don't want it there, that's another avenue for removing the boat. But for the boats that, and when we toured, what, three of the marinas where this has been described as an issue, I mean, our recommendation, well, we have a recommendation for the administration and how to proceed.
You talked about the removing, but what about causing or compelling the?
Yeah, that's, that's the nuisance.
Responsible party for removing it.
Right. The way nuisance law normally works is.
We don't want to remove it, right?
Right. Yeah, the police part of the code has us removing it, and I think we have one that we removed a while ago, and we still don't know what to do with it. But the nuisance part of the code is where we cite the owner of the property for creating a public nuisance. We give them notice of how much time they have to remove the nuisance. If they do not comply, then we give a second notice where we tell them that if you don't remove it within X number of days, we will do it at your cost. And we will then be able to create a lien on the property for the cost of removing the boat.
And that could, that could apply to a marina that has five or six. You could identify the specific boat you're talking about, and then I suppose there could be some response, well, that's not derelict, that's not abandoned, it's being renovated or something like that.
Yes, yeah, no, I imagine there will be, hopefully, a response of some sort.
Okay. Mr. Jackson?
Yeah, what's going to be the criteria for establishing when a boat is abandoned or that you can take action against it? How you, how will you determine that?
Well, there will be a number of things for staff to look at. One would be the time of year. Boats that are, I think, as our commission president has described, or vice president has described, a boat sitting on the marina on July 1st is unlikely to be in the water that whole year. And so, then some explanation is needed. Some of the boats that we know about have been in the same spot for years, that's a factor, and also the visual condition of the boat.
And then, after it has been determined that it's against one of our ordinances, what's the next step?
Again, if it's, from the chair to Mr. Jackson, if it's considered a nuisance, they get notice of the nuisance. They have so many days to fix it. If they don't fix it within that time period, they're given a second notice that if they don't fix it, we will within certain number of days, and this is what it'll cost you.
By fix, you mean remove or repair?
Yeah, right. Abating the nuisance is the technical term.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not going to fix the boat. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Pajali.
In a past life, when I worked for the city, and we did housing and nuisance control, we used to go out, there was a commissioner that was very bullish on removing junk cars and boats. He'd get us out of the office, and we would peruse the city, and, but anyhow, our technique was to, we would tag the boat with a sticker. You had five days to either remove the boat, it had to have current registration. Same with cars, they had to have current tags, that's, is one of the way you could remove them. And then, there was the five-day waiting period, and if it wasn't removed, we had a hauler who would do it for free. And he would come out, and he's still in business. I think he would still do it for free, but I imagine we would have to bid something like that. But that, that's how the policy was in 1990, 1988. I don't know if it's been changed or not, but, and this was strictly residential properties. We never went on where there was a boat storage and where it was allowed use, so I don't know if that's. No, our nuisance law is, applies to all properties. There's no distinction between residential and commercial. But you're right, that's another criteria that can be used, check the registration of the boat. It can be more complicated, it's a federally registered boat, but certainly for the state registrations, that's easy enough.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Zuloff.
Yeah, so, the sticky thing to me, the thing that makes me, you know, in the interest of fairness, if someone has an inoperative car in their driveway or in their backyard, it's up on blocks or whatever, and it's been sitting there, and grass is growing under it, that's clearly harming the neighbors, and that's just a nuisance. And if it's a boat, it's the same thing. On the other hand, in a commercially zoned location, that's in the business of repairing or even salvaging boats, you know, we, now, we have to draw that distinction, too, because there's such a thing as a boneyard, as they call it, the salvage operation, automotive salvage, those are inoperative, and it's in a special class, and it's a special category of zoning. And those cars are never going to run again, but they keep them until they, until there's no more marketable parts to strip, and then you hope they go off to the, to be crushed and recycled, and although sometimes they just seem to accumulate forever, and, or waiting for the price of steel to change. So, I think we have to be pretty clear on what the criteria is, and I'm reassured by your discussion of the due process, where you contact the owner, and let's assume it is a boatyard, which sometimes those projects are a long time, so I think it would, would it be a valid defense for the owner to say, oh, no, you know, here are the invoices, we're working on it, here are the parts we have in order, or whatever, and, or some sort of response that says this is a project, and no, we, no, this is not a derelict boat? Because laypeople, even people who know something about boats, may have a hard time without a survey or without determining the value of a boat. You know, there's a big difference between an ugly boat that's been overhauled with a new motor, with a new motor recently, and an ugly boat with an old, with a really old dead motor, for example. And you just can't tell by looking for, by outward appearance, so provided, you know, on the other hand, there are going to be blatant cases, right? There are going to be cases where, you know, it's fallen off the cradle. Nobody cares, obviously, and we've seen cases like that, right?
We saw one of those just the other day, yeah.
Yeah, right. But, but I am loathe to tell somebody they got to remove a boat from a boatyard, because I think it's ugly, right? I mean, there are really skilled artists who make lovely paintings and watercolors of old boats in various.
An old boat can have a lot of character.
Right, and, you know, I see some beauty in that, too. So, let's not just, you know, overreact, because somebody doesn't like the way something looks.
No.
But on the other hand, let's not allow decrepitude, and just, just because somebody's dysfunctional or, or has lost track of their project.
Through you, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I have one more question. Help me understand the difference between if this boat is sitting on land that the owner of the boat owns versus he's renting that land from a boatyard.
Yeah, that shouldn't make a lot of difference if we allow boats on people's land. You know, the issue is whether it's same as a car. You can park your car in a driveway, but if it's up on blocks and the grass is growing and all those other things that we've talked about, it could become a nuisance.
Excuse me, but if it was sitting on land that the boat owner didn't own, would you go after the individual that owned the land, or would you first?
No, yeah, we have a separate ordinance system for people that put boats where the owner of the land doesn't want it there. That becomes a police matter, and I think that's the part that we have enforced in the past. And, you know, basically, the boat is trespassing on someone's land.
He's asking if it's sitting in a marina, and there's a bunch of junk boats, and it happens to be one of them, would you cite with, under the nuisance law, the owner of the marina?
Oh, yeah, we cite the owner of the marina under nuisance law.
Yeah, that's.
And then, we wait for the owner of the marina to tell us the story, such as it is.
Okay, that was what, yeah, that's what I, the question I wanted answered, yes. Thank you.
So, it seems like this is moving forward, and it's going to be up to administration and maybe the city commission to give some further direction to ongoing enforcement. But there are tools available.
There are tools available. We're not aware of other tools that would make it better. I think the tools that we have will work.
Okay.
If that's what we want to do.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I would request that we ask the staff to apprise us of further developments, and except for that, that we take no immediate action regarding the recommendation of legislation based on the report that, that we have, the ordinances that we need to abate these nuisances.
Is that a request or a motion?
Well, I said, I would, did I say I would, I would move? Yes, it's a motion.
Okay. Anybody care to second that motion?
I guess, Mr. Chairman, I would ask for a little bit of clarification. Mr. Zuloff, are you saying that legal staff and internal staff will just let them go ahead and work through this process, and nothing will come back to us, or, I don't know if eventually something will come to the city commission, I'm not sure how that process works, but.
I said, I said, I, I don't remember my exact words, but I wanted to, the motion was to charge. The motion was to charge the staff with proceeding and keeping us apprised and to take no immediate action regarding legislation.
Second?
Been moved and seconded. Any further comments, discussions? I suppose we should call the roll on this one.
Pete McGory?
Yes.
Jim Jackson?
Yes.
Mike Zuloff?
Yes.
Steve Pajali?
Yes.
Motion passed, thank you. I might take a moment. I probably should have done this right at the beginning, and I was thinking about having Ms. Chupone do it, but then she got right into the issue. But maybe we should formally introduce the new Law Director, Mr. Hastings. If he can stand. And I had introduced myself again. I'm Pete McGory, maybe, and I know probably the city, but everybody could introduce himself.
Well, we also have signs in front of us, but I'm sure to... Happy to give him a resume.
Okay. Forget it, don't introduce yourself.
I'm Jim Jackson.
Mr. Jackson? Steve Pajali, we've met. We've met a number of times, yes.
Mike Zuloff, welcome aboard, glad to have you.
Thank you.
Heard great things about you.
Thank you.
And you certainly have met staff.
Yes.
Okay, well, again, welcome to the city.
The official welcome for you.
Yes.
Will you be continuing? I'll ask you some other time. I won't waste time in the meeting. I'd love to get together and have a coffee or something.
Please, yes, I'm open to it.
All right. So any other items of business that come before this meeting? All right, anybody care to move to adjourn?
Should we...
Second?
Seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. A new record.
The recording runs for 15 seconds after the end of the meeting.
It's not a new record.
Okay.
Close.
Just because YouTube has been like...